We're gonna call the meeting to order. It's Monday, April 28th, 2025. At the Woodbury Town Office, which is a change from our normal location. We're gonna try out this, we're just the second meeting of every month. Adjustments to the agenda?
I have a couple.
Okay.
I was thinking, since we don't have, we do need the executive session, but we're not gonna have anybody here for that. Maybe we can put that at the very end, so Jerome doesn't have to hang around while we do that.
Sure.
And then we could put the updates in other business, maybe even after the mowing and before we get to our, all our detailed work.
Sure.
I don't know how many there are. I've got a couple things, but...
For updates in other business?
Right.
Okay. So you'd like that right after mowing?
Right.
Okay. Sounds good.
And then we can do the work, the seven o'clock work?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. So we had minutes that were circulated and everybody had a chance to read them.
Kathy from the last one?
I believe.
You did. You commented and you were...
Yep. And... There was one suggestion. I guess there were no suggestions. There was just one that you must have made that change.
Well, yeah.
All right.
Did you sign it?
Well, we need a motion first.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we sign those minutes, approve those minutes.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor approving the minutes from April 14th, 2025. Please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right. And so we do have a public comment, which we are gonna ask Mr. Goddard Graves, if you'd like to make a comment or you just wanna hang out and wait for discussion.
No, I'd like to make a few remarks and try to be characteristically concise.
Okay.
At the risk of seeming to be going over ground that's been gone over many times before, I'm gonna go over it one more time. I think the town collectively needs to take some more action than it could historically have about the Walker property on Sand Hill Road. I've heard, as a writer of fiction, I've savored some of the explanations given that happened. And as a writer of fiction, I marvel at the creativity of some of the explanations that were given. I don't care. Assuming we're starting here from zero base, we have a major health issue, a major, major public order issue, and no matter what happens with the scheduled tax sale, I would like this body to commit itself to some specific actions with dates and personnel and something like a timeline. The owner of the property there has been living for several years without any evident sewage system other than the ditch bank by the road. And now that we're getting into warm weather, that's even more loathsome than it would have been in the cool weather. Ditto trash removal by burning, except of course that the place has got several tons of scrap metal and various incomprehensible accumulations of things there. The, I don't wanna do a he said, she said, because I believe in best evidence. But at the same time, I have heard that the structure in which, the structures in which the two brothers lived, in fact, were constructed on the basis of permits issued by the town. This is incomprehensible to me. I'd like to know who signed those permits and what they'd been smoking before they did it. If it's signed by one of my friends, I'll get his, his or her face and say, what were you smoking?
Usually when permits like that are issued, it's before the construction happens.
I get that.
Imagine.
It's a non-conforming lot. It's not, there's no...
Yeah, it's a pre-existing lot, so...
Pre-existing building lot? Half of it's underwater, Diana. I don't wanna get too much...
Okay, I'll tell you, just legally, it's not a non-conforming lot. It's a pre-existing lot because...
How about clear, what do I mean? Setbacks from the roads and from the property lines?
That's an, that's an issue for the zoning permit, yeah.
Well, obviously, someone said it's okay. I mean, the tract is about the size of the parking lot out here. And there are two structures out there and three, at least three people living there regularly. Not to mention the regular crap in and out of, how shall I put it? Some of the companions of Todd Walker, who periodically appear on my doorstep in a state of, various states of older awareness, trying to hustle us for one thing or another. I've had it. I've talked to the staties, the state police repeatedly about this. I've talked to the village about this. Everybody else says George, let George do it. George is never there, or else George is asleep at the switch or George is incompetent. And that place is, that lot is an annoyance for many, many people. And some have had the hope that perhaps this will be solved by the tax sale. It will not be solved by the tax sale. In the meantime, the latest dodge is that the, one of the Walkers seems to be exporting their household waste in a tank, in a mobile home or motorhome tank, and then dumping it over whatever unobserved ditch bank he could find, instead of just pouring it into, into the trench by the side of the road. That's not acceptable.
You mean at somebody else's property or on that property?
At regular intervals, you'll see them take a tank of something off their...
Away.
Away and then comes back and then... And I don't think they're taking, you know, great Kool-Aid to the sick and the shutty. Again, this is tricky to find, find evidence of this. I, actually, just a side issue, I was starting, for various reasons, Greenup Day early today, and I was going up and down Sand Hill Road. Sand Hill Road, I'm sorry to say, is getting pretty ugly. There was, I found a car seat pushed over the side of the road. Polyethylene styrofoam freezer chest, about 300, 300 cans of twisted tea. Whatever it takes to get, get us all, because we're all involved in this. I want, I want something to happen. And I wanna, I wanna add, there is, I'm sorry to say, very unfortunate precedent for this, because there is another property with, which has major health and sanitation issues and major issue of yard trash. And that place has been running wide open since before I was living here. So people that don't, if you know what I'm talking about, it's the last house south of me before the Calis line.
So, well, wait, there's another one on your road?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jules Bryan Carlton. He hasn't...
Oh, okay.
His sanitation is the same sanitation as the deer, the pork, the pines, and the squirrels have. And it has been that. I know this because I've tried to help him put something in and he just, oh, yuck, 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 yuck.
Hey, Goddard, do you mind if I fill everybody in on kind of the conversation I had with you?
Yes, yes.
With everybody else?
My, my promise of conciliation got lost.
No, it's okay. So anyways, over the weekend, I got a call from, it's Peter, no, yeah, Peter Parker?
Peter Palmer.
Yeah, Palmer, Palmer, sorry. So Peter Palmer called me over the weekend, expressing similar concerns that Goddard has. I drove by, I took a drive on Sunday, up past the, past the residence, just to kind of figure out what we're looking at. And then this morning, I got a phone call, not only from Goddard this morning, but also from Tim Howe, expressing concerns about this as well. After I got off the phone with these two gentlemen, I called Paul Sarudi, who had a plan to go up to visit the site at some point. We both agreed we would go together.
For what?
He's going there because there's been complaints about open burning.
Oh.
So we're gonna join forces and go next week, I believe, to do a visit. But I wanted to touch base with everybody here, because I can't remember. Do we normally send a letter? Do we normally make a phone call? How does that work? Or do we just show up unannounced?
If somebody can show up unannounced, that's gonna have a lot more impact than writing a letter.
Okay, so we'll do that. I'll make a call.
I mean, if they wanna complain that you don't have a warrant or something, you know, they can, but...
And, and as the town health officer, I'm, there are certain things that I'm looking for, which is similar to our last visit the other day.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And if, and that'll be the next steps.
I'm not sure you're the town health officer yet, though.
Yes, he is.
I thought I signed some papers.
Did you get that? Oh, I never saw that. Okay, good, good.
They sent me an email and they sent stuff right directly to Chris.
Great. Oh, good. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah.
It's great. I'm psyched about it.
I'll bring you my file next time I see you.
So anyways, that, just so that you guys are up to speed and what Goddard is talking about this. And he's not the only one who's worried about this.
But Tim Howe, what did he, I mean, where's he at?
Tim Howe bought a place up on, it's not Sand Hill, he's not on Sand Hill, is he?
He bought the murder house.
Right, but he sold it.
Yeah, he's, he's, he sold that. But, you know, he goes, goes up Sand Hill Road dozens of times. He lives there.
Yeah, he lives, he lives on the, down at the end of the town, right?
He's, he's, he's again, just in the...
He's in Woodbury.
He's in Woodbury, okay.
He has lots of property in Calis. But he's concerned about this. He's also concerned about this, we're now getting off into an area where you don't have jurisdiction, but you need to see the bigger picture. He's also been concerned that some of the people who frequent the Walker property have made trouble for him personally. And he's not pleased about this, nor am I. And they get away with it because nobody wants to talk about it. And the staties don't, you know, the staties, staties don't do anything about drugs. Never have. I wonder whether they ever will. I've been told by at least two people in this room, well, sooner or later, this will involve court action. And the court will say, well, it's better for him to live in a dump than live under a bridge. Well, I think that's a somewhat pessimistic way of course this. And that's, and I'm just, I have had it up to here.
So somebody...
Hold on. I'm almost 80 years old. I live with a person who cannot walk. We are tired of having a smack dealer down the road from us getting away with stuff that none of us could get away with for 15 minutes, whether it's, whether it's a health issue, a law enforcement issue, an issue of public decency, an issue of aesthetics. This has gone way, way, way too long. And dare, did I say this before, where you're listening? I have had it and it's...
So I did express to everybody that I spoke to that, you know, we're gonna go make a site visit, but nothing happens overnight. So I think everybody's kind of aware that, you know, it's on the radar.
I think if we...
Do what I can.
We haven't called the, I haven't called our A and R enforcement person in a number of months, but I think that that was also on his radar.
That site or specifically the site?
Yeah, the site. What's, what's his name? Geez, I can't remember.
You're talking about someone in the state?
Yeah.
Well, I may have had a similar conversation with this guy. And here's what he told me. He said, he has, his jurisdiction covers any number of towns.
Right.
He, he said that his umbrella jurisdiction has more complaints than any other comparable jurisdiction in the state, including Chittenden County. People, properties. And he said within that, there are more complaints with, about Woodbury within his jurisdiction. There is trouble in River City, men and girls.
Although some places have been cleaned up.
Some places have been cleaned up. Some places are going now in a direction.
Burned down.
We don't want salvation through, that's, that's no solution.
No, I didn't know about...
I'm not suggesting it is, it's just that it's how...
I didn't know about Jules, because, you know, you can't see it, so...
Well, you, Diana, you're smart because you walked in the road. You don't wanna travel the road. But in fact, he's got at least three dead cars, one dead tractor, a house trailer, a boat, and a couple of utility trailers in front of God and everybody. And if you, if you can, a blind man could see them.
So I think, appreciate you coming in. I think the next step is, as you heard from Paul and me, to go visit and report back.
I have a procedural question. I assume somewhere this is public record. I would like to know the permit history for the, the alleged permit history for the construction that has happened in the last few years.
Well, I think, you know, we have, it's a perfect thing for us to do during our Woodbury stuff, work time, is, you know, later in the meeting, we'll have an opportunity, maybe that Robin or Lily could dig that up for us. At the moment, we're not gonna stop to do that.
I, I get that.
I'm pretty sure that, I'm pretty sure there was only one structure approved.
Well, there are two standing there.
I know, so there's a violation there, yeah.
So permit, okay.
She can find that right away.
Great. I'd prefer to move on and do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
She's got the good word.
Thank you.
Come back anytime.
Robin, you got something to say?
Since we're on this topic, we have another location on Upper Hericks Cove Road at Woodbury Lake.
All right.
But that's just a mess.
Yes.
That's not garbagey or, I did inspect that as a health officer last year.
Well, they've been in this year and they say there's garbage everywhere.
Garbage like, not junk, but food and...
Yes.
Really?
They say the rats are coming in.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, that's my list. And then you'll give me that address?
Yes.
All right. And then maybe you can fill me in on the history there at some point. All right.
Yeah, I didn't know anybody was in, going in there, even still alive.
And is it like, I've been down there, but it's been a while. So is it near the beginning of Eric's Cove or further?
You gotta go down to the, where it turns and goes up, to Upper Hericks Cove.
Okay.
I don't know how to explain it, except that's what the road does.
Keep following, I'll find it.
Yeah, and it's right up at the top of that big curve. All right. It did look, when I looked at it last year, it was just a bunch of junk, like they had had a yard sale and it didn't go well, and their tent collapsed and they left. But there wasn't any garbage at that point.
Is it a property somebody lives at or?
No.
What'd they hang on?
The guy who owns it, I don't know where he is or if anybody knows where he is.
They were saying he's AWOL, so...
He's AWOL, yeah. But his mother is trying to hang on to the property by paying the taxes. But if somebody's been out, been over there, yeah, I don't know who that could be.
Do you have public comment?
I do.
All right, great.
Briefly. So thank you for the survey and thank you for the certificate. One thing that we need that was uncovered is the sam.gov account for Woodbury is apparently inactive as of February 12th of 2025. Does anybody know about that?
Yes.
Lily's been around.
So we need to get that reactivated, I guess.
Yes, we've been running into significant issues with that back and forth.
Yes.
I heard Sam got...
It's here as well, just...
Is the sam.gov even available for business?
Yeah, I think they sold the building.
It's up right now, but...
We've consistently gone back and forth with them. Last time I heard from Skip, we were stuck.
Stuck. They, they continue to want different pieces of information. The hangup is they don't believe that the address for this building is correct. And so they don't understand that our post office in Woodbury doesn't deliver mail. They can't get that concept through. So when we, when we survey the USPS, the USPS says our mail is delivered from East Calis. So it's, it's really not. If you look at every other piece of information, you know, how we're in the Secretary of State's office, how we get our utility bills, it's all P O Box 10-05681. So that's, that's the thing, is to get them to understand that we are 1672 or about 2014. P O Box 10-05681. And they refuse to accept that, even though prior to February 2025, it was fine.
Yep.
It was fine. And now it's just like, there are these roadblocks that keep coming up and they're different. When you send them the information they want, they say, well, it's not really, we need this information. Send them that information. Lily's been there as well, and it's just a continual...
Yep.
So John, how will this impact you?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know yet, but apparently the state needs it from the, I guess I had my federal money. Is this my understanding? I mean, I guess the money is...
They need it for the same reason. The rest of us need it, right?
Yeah. Maybe it would be a good idea, we could all, possibly all three of us, get on a meeting with the state representative who we were working with at the state level, so we can talk to them and come about the issues that we've been having. Because we can't be the only town that's experiencing issues.
One of the issues they keep bringing up is that if we were a rural room, it's out of East Calis, and that's what they're basing it on. It's like Skip says, Woodbury doesn't have a rural room.
So why don't we stick a post office, a box out front, a mailbox?
Well...
Everybody else around here gets mail delivered. Sorry, I mean, it'd be kinda silly, but...
That would change every address in the face of the planet.
Right.
You know, the Secretary of State's, River City's and town's, I mean, everything would have to be changed for an address that's been around for 50 to 60 years.
I think if somebody's...
Their all the bank accounts would have to be changed, oh my god.
If somebody sends us mail at 1672 Route 14, I think it goes to our post office and comes to us eventually.
So the issue is, they accepted it for the years we've been affiliated with Sam.gov. It's always been P O Box 10. It's treated us, but also P O Box 10. And they were fine with it. And suddenly they're not fine with it. And Lily and I have been beating our heads against the wall. So... It'll get there, hopefully, and Lily and I have hatched a plan a little bit earlier tonight. We were talking about it. So Lily's gonna become the co-administrator of sam.gov for the town of Woodbury. So instead of having one of us, one at a time, go at them, it'll be two of us at the same time going at them. And we, we have all the information, all the information we sent to them, all their information requests. And we fulfilled all their information requests. It's just, I don't think they want us to get any cover of us.
Well, you know...
I don't think that, you know, they know it, we exist. They just know that the numbers don't match up. That's...
Well, we existed before February.
Yeah, but you know, that was the...
That's true. That was a different world before January 20th.
Different days, different federal administrator, different administration. I mean, I mean, the feds run on paper. They're steam-powered. They run on paper. Take the paper, they throw it in the boiler and it boils and it's...
They're burning on test.
I mean, if they won't, don't want us to have the money, there's easier ways to do that. Just do away with the program. Don't worry about it.
So we, I guess you'll have to let those folks know that we're having difficulty with our...
Yeah.
And then...
It's not from market price.
Oh, I, no, that's, I don't have any great answers for you, I guess. Good.
And it shouldn't say inactive, it should say in process.
In process.
Says inactive.
No.
It says in process.
So here's that you asked for last time.
Thank you.
And while John is here, can I skip over to the report on the title search?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So Robin and I both have been digging out papers, and I found one that seemed really promising. It was from 1962. And a gentleman sold, I don't know if it, I don't remember if it was all of what he owned, but it's fairly clearly described as going from the front, you know, the southern side of the town hall for 50 feet. And the line goes out to the stream, you know, parallel line out to the stream and out to the road. So that seemed pretty clear to me. I did actually measure it the other day, and the building itself is 25 feet. It's seven feet to the, 17 feet to the town hall, and that leaves another eight feet. So anyways, that's, was granted, it was given to the town of Woodbury for the use of the fire department as long as the fire department shall exist, which it still does, even though it's not using that land. So hopefully, I think the third person, the third lawyer I contacted was able to do the title search, and he's been in here a couple times. I don't know why it's more complicated than I thought it would be, but, you know. So anyways, that might be happening.
Very good.
Probably before you get your SAM number. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
Anything else you wanna?
Nope, it was just that. But no, I, I have to deal with the feds in other capacities and it's always a joy.
Yeah, getting worse. Or, I mean, it always has been, but...
It's just, the amount of...
It's different.
The amount of stuff that you have to do under for them to... Yeah, it's just checking boxes to them. And if it doesn't fit precisely, it gets, yeah, it's no, no independent thought alone. It's just a general theme.
No creativity, huh?
Thanks for staying on topic.
Sure.
Hopefully that won't be much more holdups. Let's see.
I'll let the state know and then I'll, we'll see if we can't...
We'll put you in our emails, try.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Um, let's move on to Robin and the town clerk's report.
Last Tuesday, I went to a trading in Montpelier with the Secretary of State. They are doing a new system for elections. And hopefully, their new system is gonna talk to DMV much better. So the information will go back more smoothly, hopefully. And I went through and the positions I see that we still need, if Chris doesn't wanna keep it, we need a health officer.
Oh, doesn't hurt to ask, I guess.
Tree warden.
I switch with somebody for the tree warden job?
Energy coordinator and Central Mont solid waste.
So I was gonna ask if...
And...
Oh, sorry?
We also need at least two for the planning commission, if not three.
During our work time, would either one of me be willing to make a, draft a front porch forum for...
I'll do it. It'll take about five minutes. I'd be happy to. I should have done it already, but you wanted to put it on the agenda, so I'll do it. And also put it on the Facebook page.
Super.
What does an energy coordinator do?
We haven't had one for years. I guess they could do, if they wanted to, they could, I don't know.
Probably come through and see if our building here is, that the, like our windows are leaking and we're losing energy.
Well, they're not energy auditors, but, you know, if they wanted to start a program where they bring in energy auditors, maybe, or...
I, I feel like we also, I lost it. There's another position that, oh, the, our solid waste, our Central Vermont solid waste. Do we have a, we have a representative to that?
No, not yet. That's one of the ones that I listed off.
You just listed that. Sorry, I missed that one. Okay.
And what does that person do?
Goes to meetings in the Central Vermont area, in the board. The solid waste district board takes care, really regulates all of the solid waste disposal.
Okay.
They, they also run things like hazardous waste programs and they have, they have a big, they're building a big new facility so you can take your hazardous waste there. And they have contracts with haulers that have to, the haulers have to abide by certain rules and regulations.
Now, they're the ones that do the computer drop-off and speed drop-off, right?
The computer and what?
Your old computers and paint?
Yes.
Because I think I saw that on the news before I came up here tonight, that the gut would come in right up.
Right. I think there's probably a poster out, usually there's a poster out front saying where they're gonna, what pickups or drop-offs they're gonna have during the year. They do usually one in Hardwick.
Yep.
Yeah, and they have a place called the Alternative Recycling Center or something like that, where you can bring things that won't go in the dump, like computers and stuff. Of course, we've got gates, so we don't have any of that, but... So I always found it interesting to go to join some of those boards back when, you know, because you get to go into town and meet other people from other towns who are doing other things, if you have time. Anyways.
That's about all I have.
Great. Okay.
Lily?
Um, yes, so the, for the treasurer's report or income, um, over the last two weeks, cash receipts total was six thousand eight hundred ninety-two and twenty-three cents. Majority of this was from delinquent tax, um, at five thousand three hundred and fifty. The remaining, uh, land re-recordings, fleet copy, um, records and zoning permits. Uh, we have one state of Vermont transfer for reporting fee for forty-five dollars. Um, our expenses for payroll, ten thousand five hundred and fifty-six and sixty-three cents. And accounts payable, fifteen thousand one hundred and five and twenty-nine cents. We have one transfer from our money market to our checking account.
Very twelve hundred, very twelve thousand.
Uh, several months ago, I filled out some papers that were requested by, um, V-Trans in order for them to give us thirty-five hundred dollars from the damage that they did in town last year. Did that check, could you see if that check has ever come in and can we decide where to put that?
For, with V-Trans?
Yeah. It was thirty-five hundred dollars.
And when you say damage that they did, what, what are you referring to?
When they were putting in the culvert up in the village, I think that was before you, your time. It was lights, it was traffic lights and everything. They tore the place up, and they tore up our, our park, and they tore up the yard of the post office, and, yeah. I mean, they fixed it all, but they didn't put it back exactly like it was, so they gave us thirty-five hundred dollars for additional damages. I guess, yeah.
And we haven't seen it yet?
I don't know.
Okay, you just don't know, okay.
It might have been just sucked into the general fund or something, but I would like to have that maybe set aside in one of our special funds so that we can, um, use it for something in the village.
Okay.
So, look for that and let me know and.
Yeah, can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Also, oh, you're right here, great, I didn't see you coming. Um, I also wanted to bring up, Brandy and I had been talking kind of about these excess funds that we have for both our reappraisal and the excess FEMA funds, and when we'll actually be able to use them. But we've been throwing around the idea, Brandy had brought up the idea of putting that excess cash into a CD fund, which is essentially just a fund that we get locked into, we would probably only do about six months to a year. But essentially have the opportunity to make, you know, four percent on this money that we have. I don't have the specific numbers, I'm going to bring them next time, kind of projecting what we could make off of this. But I wanted to talk to Skip if you thought it was, um, a possible thing that we could actually do with that excess money.
Well, it depends how liquid the funds would be.
Not for six months.
Right, so.
Well, you can always take them out, there's just some type of penalty.
Yeah, which is what I need to find out more about.
So, as you'll see in, in my pit tonight, there's a project that we could start immediately and draw down the front pipe from that mitigation line. So, and, and that would be taking the debris out of the stream in the village, you know, because it's filled with crap, uh, filled with blocks and stuff. And so, uh, you could start drawing off of that, maybe you could not take the entire five hundred and one thousand dollars, maybe a portion of it.
Yep.
You know, what I would feel comfortable with.
Yeah. Could we sit down and talk about what that would actually look like?
You know, just throwing a raw number out, you know, put two hundred thousand dollars into a CD and leave three hundred?
Yeah.
Because, uh, the culvert works pretty expensive. We had a meeting with a gentleman from A and R on the sixth of June, I took, on the fourth of June to look at two culvert projects. But, you know, put a two hundred thousand dollars in it.
Skip, there must be some sort of like, um, caveat in the contracts that these guys, that these ex, these companies that bid on the project, you know, if, if something out of the ordinary, if they find something out of the ordinary, or. For instance, and I can only use an example from my own life, is that like if I'm renovating an old house, I can, you know, I can give somebody an estimate, but I can't necessarily guarantee what I'm going to find when I pull.
Contingencies.
Contingencies, yeah, thank you. Is there, there must be something like that for these projects?
I don't think so.
No?
Not for, from, from the two projects for Town Highway two in twenty-four.
Yeah.
And we have the expert engineer, uh, project manager, if you want to call it that. And these are firm, fast contracts that can't be.
Great.
You can't charge any more money to, you know, if they have any extra monies they have to spend, it's all on.
It's their chance, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be, what I envision, the same type of RFP. You know, it's, it's just a contract, it's firm pricing, anything above that, you're on the hook for it.
Yep, good.
Yeah, and unlike, you know, a building like this, it will be contingencies because once you attack the roof, you don't know what you're going to find.
Exactly.
Or any other, uh, project you guys decide to do for this building.
Speaking of this building, the windstorm this weekend took out one of our slats in the cubicle.
Oh, no kidding?
Yeah.
No kidding?
It was pretty breezy.
Um, other than that, um.
So, is there any, I know, a long time ago, there used to be a prohibition against using town funds to invest and make money, but I don't think, I mean, Brandy's been putting in the money market, so that's kind of the same thing, right?
It's a small amount.
Yeah.
But a CD is a different animal.
Right, yeah.
And you get penalized if, you know, take something out of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't see us spending a half a million dollars in the next six months or a year, so if you do a six month CD, you know, that would be good. Even a year, you know, if you bid, send a bid out to rehab this building, you know, it's not going to be done tomorrow. Unless, there's two contractors here, jump on it or something, anyhow, yeah.
And also the, uh, I'm gonna have to check again, but when the reappraisal is going to start, you know, that might not be for another year, and we got a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars sitting in that account.
Mm-hmm, um, and I believe the contract said that we wouldn't have to start making payments until, when was it? July, do you remember July twenty-twenty-seven for the person?
That sounds right.
Yeah, for the company, so that gives us about a year, year and a half, right, if I'm doing my math correctly.
First, we do have the, the mapping project, that's going to be paid for out of, uh, the, the Lister's Education Fund, I guess. And that was only ten thousand, yeah, that's only eight thousand dollars, so, not part of that mix, so.
Lily, do you know, so you were saying four percent for the CD, and I'm just curious, because I recently learned about green money market accounts and that they yield good interest. Um, do you know, and those, like, you can just pull the money out whenever there's no waiting period? Do you know, like, what the difference is in the interest rates between like a green money market account versus a CD?
I don't, but I can explore that.
Okay.
Edward Jones in Morrisville has a pretty decent rates on CDs as opposed to banks.
What was that, sorry?
Edward Jones in Morrisville, it's a investment firm. And they have a, they have, you know, five percent. I don't think you'll get that much at a bank.
Yeah, I think we would, we would take on a little bit more of a risk with that, um, with an investment.
It's a CD, it's a CD, so.
Yeah, um, but yeah, just want to let you guys know that I'm exploring that. Thank you for the insight about the green money market, so I'll look into that.
SAM.gov.
SAM.gov and Talkin' Money. The only other thing besides that, um, that I wanted to let everybody know today, is some, you know, a, a large, long heads up on some vacation time in July of, um, this coming year. Um, so I'm planning.
So, I'm sorry, I missed, I think I missed some of that.
A vacation.
Oh, a vacation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do what?
I didn't see that in your contract. A long vacation, no, a couple of weeks or?
Two weeks.
Oh.
Um, two weeks, it's going to be over the Fourth of July weekend, um, so essentially July third through July twenty-first. Already talked to Brandy about signing on as the assistant town treasurer to kind of take over my duties, um, you know, payroll, things like that, uh, during that time.
She's okay with that?
She seems to be okay with that, yes.
Great.
Thanks, Lily. So I did put, uh, because we're kind of talking about this, approved bills and payroll orders, but we are, we can push that to the end of the meeting if we want. And move right on to, uh, Skip, if, if you guys want to do that. Or we can look at them now, but the next thing in the adjustments to, of, agenda is the culvert project list. And I already started talking about it a little bit, it sounds like.
So shall I sit here?
Please.
Come on up. That was the back of my head.
Nice.
You don't have a big bald spot like Trump does.
We're not talking politics very much.
No, I'm talking bald spots.
Very different. Thank you.
Oh, nice. Did I get one?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, thanks.
So we had a meeting, Michael and I and Alfie last Wednesday, and we went over this list of culverts that we, we sent you, and we came up with a list, and these are prioritized for culverts on County Road and Dog Pond Road. And so, the first three require an H and H study by A and R, so we have a gentleman coming out, I forget his name.
By A and R or by V-Trans?
Jason Board.
He's, he's the stream guy.
He's a stream guy.
Stream alteration guy, but the H and H is usually done by V-Trans.
He's going to come out and take a look at the culverts.
Yeah, they still have to, yeah, he still has to approve it, yeah.
So, and that will be happening early July, the fourth and the sixth. So, uh, those have been prioritized.
Any chance that they'll need any engineering?
It depends on what the H and H study looks like. If the H and H study is comprehensive, then we can just go out to bid, but.
Oh, you think you might have to go to bids on some of these?
Well, they'd be more than eight thousand dollars, yeah.
Oh, really? Just a big culvert, really?
Well, these, these first two are going to be like very large culverts, they could be even box culverts.
Oh.
So that could be very pricey. So, but we don't know until, you know, some expert goes out there and takes a look at it.
Yeah, a couple more looks.
And that's why there's a cost, uh, column associated with this, because we want to be sure that, you know, we don't put all the excess obligated funds into culverts when this place could you really use and upgrade? And it's money we earn, so to speak, so, you know, we're not distributing. At least that's my thought. Another mitigation project is under the heading of road work and bank stabilization. And these projects can be done by Alfie, he assured it's just like, maybe a day's work for ditching and the bank stabilization would be, uh, you know, putting more fill into the bank and putting larger rip rap, you know, to hold water back and.
So the Cabot Road one is the one that Michael was proposing for that other funding source that got pulled?
The brick rant? Yeah, that's, no, that's, this is just something other than that, the brick rant would have been close to a three hundred thousand dollar engineering study.
No, that, not, not the study, but the one where they were going to rearmour the bank right up the hill from.
No, it's not this, no, this is farther up.
This is up above the Coal Mountain House.
Yeah.
The first turn that goes into the quarry, it's up there.
It's right up there.
Okay.
So all of these, um, these two, it's, it sounds like the town crew could do that work.
Obviously, lady could do it.
And then how, how does that work in terms of funding, obviously, like, any materials purchased would be covered, but like, does the town, is, are they able to pay the labor for that?
Yeah, it's called force account labor.
Okay.
And so there's a special timesheet that the road crew would have to fill out. Or they could give me the hours and I could fill it out. And that would, you know, help us to sustain any type of, uh, audit by FEMA. So there are certain forms that they like to see. So, yeah, it's called force account labor, and this money will pay for it.
Great.
You said force account?
Force account, yeah.
Did Alfie have a sense of, um, how long it would take to do the bank stabilization work? Okay.
He didn't, no, he just said he could do it.
Ah.
Yeah, and so I said, great.
So I'm guessing the road would have to be close to the tractor trailers when he's doing that work?
You're talking to a telecommunications. I, I'm presuming, depending upon, you know, how, what they have to do.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that can be done, you know, just call up Swenson.
He said when they did the other one, that, the one that I was just talking about, right up the hill from Ronnie's Rathburns, he said they just closed one lane, they were able to do it with, by closing one lane.
Sure. And this last one, mitigation project, this is in-stream work, so it's Buck Lake Burke right in the village, right behind Jake Shadick's house. You'll see there's chunks of granite in there and, you know, impeding the water coming down, so. Uh, Alfie said he could do that, and he would landscape it so it would fit the same type of landscaping that V-Trans.
Wouldn't it make sense to wait until the, the site is restored, you know, when the building removed and the site is restored by somebody else's money?
I would say no. And the reason why is that we don't know how long between when that grant is awarded to when the actual construction takes place. So I believe, and Alfie believes that the stream work should be done immediately because it's impeding the flow of water. And any large rain, you know, would cause the whole village.
I mean, I can understand taking the, the big blocks out of there that fell in.
And that other grant, when they take the house down, they'll pay for landscaping. Because that's the only thing you can do to that property, you can't build anything on it.
But this is uphill than that.
No, this is just a lot of water, it's behind the house.
So, we have a stream permit that was pulled when the culvert was put in. So they're checking out whether or not that stream permit is still in effect. If not, they're going to have to pull the permit to work in the stream.
Okay.
So it was a productive year, and, you know, we have a path forward, we just, these first three projects on County Road will have to have a little more attention to.
These, these potentially could be hundred thousand dollar projects.
Depends.
Yeah.
Depends.
So in one of our, um, you know, we're very slow with work items is that, um, to create a scope of work, and hopefully Liz and I could start that maybe tonight, maybe, maybe in two weeks, but the scope of work for cost estimating for this.
Yeah, that'd be great. In, in that light, I had sent you guys this two hundred eighty-eight page mitigation ideas.
I memorized it, don't worry.
And, uh, so, and along with it, I sent, uh, what to do for roads, what to do for buildings, and what to do for roofs.
Okay.
And it's all on the page, page number and stuff like that, so, you know, if you want to frame your RFP or scope of work based loosely on this, that would be great.
Yeah, can we make some copies of that, can we get a?
It's a digital copy?
What?
It's like many, many pages, right?
I know, but just page one, that page.
Right, and this is something when I went through the two hundred eighty-eight pages.
Did you pull that about? Yeah, so can we have a copy of that? Can I have a copy of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else want a copy?
I mean, that's one, one thing about being here in the office.
This is like your suggestions, right, for like, things that we could find.
Yeah, and I sent that out in an email.
I remember seeing it, yeah.
It's been for weeks.
Oh, the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah.
Big, yeah, the eighty-page one, yeah.
But it had some recommendations from you to sort of like narrow it down.
Yeah, we shouldn't all have to read it.
Just Liz.
You just have a working knowledge.
I was just talking.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You don't have to read it.
Yeah, that's, that's a good part.
Well, that's a good start.
Good to share your part.
I think so too. So, uh, I just wanna read another email that I sent out to you folks. And the, I think the key passage from my mediation officer or mitigation officers, anything over the required codes and standards would be considered mitigation.
Okay.
So consider that when you're putting together a scope of work.
But we don't have any required codes and standards.
So even better.
It's all over.
It's all over. So.
I don't think even the state has any codes. They have some like electrical codes and plumbing codes and stuff.
Yeah, when I do electrician work, I do it skips codes. Motorcycle.
Thank you so much.
Did you want one?
Yeah.
Oh, I, I see what you did, what this is.
I got a printed out copy, the whole eighty-eight, two hundred eighty-eight pages in. Sort of thing.
Yeah, so the main thing that.
So you've probably printed it all out?
For mitigation for buildings.
I talked to Skip and thought it would be even like you didn't have it here.
And, uh, making sure your basement doesn't flood.
So we talked about some drainage around the back, roofs, windows.
But ser- not seriously gutters, somebody mentioned gutters.
Gutters is the key in this.
Yeah.
It pushes water away from the foundation and mitigates flooding into, uh.
Yeah, but where does it send it?
Sends it to that house.
That's what I was thinking.
Well, I think.
Yeah, that's our bad corner over there and that's somebody else's driveway over there, so that's.
Alfie said there's a storm drain. We might be able to tie into a storm drain.
There's a culvert right out front that you could tie into.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Hmm.
So it was a good meeting and we're just waiting for those three big projects to have the state come out and, uh, take a look. Thank you.
So you're sure that this would be approved? Even though it has nothing to do with flood damage?
Well, you.
These building things.
It's mitigation against floods.
But the.
Due to the cellar flooded, correct?
Yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
The roof didn't leak.
Well, you're losing slats off the cooper, you know, and it's a windstorm, so you have to try.
Yeah, well, that's historical, so we'll probably have to have a historical analysis.
Those are all legitimate.
Only just wanna be sure.
Well, yes, those are all legitimate.
Okay.
It's great, you might as well do it if you can.
I want to.
Well, yes, well, the money's there.
Yeah.
Um, welcome to hang out and.
For what?
Lawn mowing?
Lawn mowing tax rebate?
Well, still the work, no, our paper, town hall roof.
Maybe we could.
That could be another mitigation project depending upon.
Town hall roof?
Yeah. Because it's just not solely limited. The mitigation funds are limited to this structure.
The town hall could use some, some foundation work, although when Lizzie lost, Lizzie, Lizzie looked at it, she didn't think anything of it, but when I looked at it, I saw a lot of dirt had been washed away from the piers.
I crawled underneath, it looked okay to me.
Did you crawl underneath?
I, well, I didn't have to crawl underneath, I could look under there.
Especially on the firehouse side, you can see it, where.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see what they do with the firehouse and when that goes away.
Yeah.
And how they landscape their mitigation runs.
Well, we.
Question mark.
But the, uh, to know that the town land starts at the edge of that building, at the edge of the town hall, the south side, our septic tank is on the town, the other, the town's land, although it is the town. The land under the town hall isn't ours except by lease. But the land, you know, we'll just have to make sure they know that that's there. And also there's some water pipes, but I'm sure they'll figure that out.
That's what they do.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Thank you.
So we'll have, uh, more information once the engineer takes a peek. But Alfie can start those other projects immediately.
Mm-hmm.
You know, he just has to find the time.
Hmm.
You had asked me to send you the RFP for that roof.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't do that, right? But Michael said he, I got it from Michael. Yeah, I'll, I'll send it again.
Yeah.
It's got a crazy formatting system though, it's gonna drive you crazy, just so you know. But I'll send it.
It used to be.
You mean the one that we did last year?
Yeah.
Hmm. Uh, RFPs.
Okay, I have sample RFPs for mitigation projects that other towns and other states have created.
Hmm.
If that might be of some help.
Especially if there's a roof one in there.
There is a roof one.
Great.
Hmm.
I'll send that to you.
Yeah, like I said, I think that the reason, um, one of the reasons that we didn't get any interest is that the complexity of that RFP that, uh, I used was, I mean, I wouldn't have bid on it.
Well, you can overwhelm them with terms and conditions and stuff like that.
It was crazy.
You know, and I don't know.
Thank you, Skip.
You're welcome. All right, no questions? All right.
Enjoy your evening.
I will.
All right.
We'll be in touch.
Yes.
All right, mowing for town properties, we almost caught up.
So Brandy reminded me that anything between one dollar and eight thousand dollars, we're supposed to get at least, look around and get at least three bids, three estimates. So, um, she sent this around to all of us and I'm gonna make a few changes just because the description isn't, doesn't include our newest park. And if you haven't looked at it, uh, the one she sent you online, you can look at this, but I'm not gonna leave this with you, 'cause that's my copy that I printed out. So she suggested, and she's gonna send, she has a, a note, a little description, like not, not an RFP, but something to send to three companies to see if they're interested and.
Yep.
Then, uh, the date to respond is Friday after next, I think. Uh, yeah, the, respond by the ninth and we'll decide on the twelfth.
Great.
So it might not be a hard decision, I don't know. The guy who did it last year was much lower priced than the other two, which are the same two, we're going back out to because they did bid last year, so we should give them a try. So that's that.
So there's nothing to be done with that yet?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Thanks for altering that to the plan. The new mowing needs.
Hmm, right.
Um. So I guess now, at this point, we can decide what we'd like to tackle.
We were gonna, there was, we were gonna move the updates up here.
Oh, yeah, you had some updates, sure.
Future agenda items and the updates.
I think future agenda items, I believe, down there only because, uh, they kinda present themselves as the meeting goes along.
Mm-hmm.
I don't necessarily have anything at the moment.
I have these for you, since you didn't have time to do the Vermont Open Meeting Law webinar. PLCT.
Did you do it?
I figured you should have, yeah, I did.
Oh, well, thank you.
You're doing it, it's great.
Thanks for doing it.
And it was pretty boring, I mean, I did make a few notes, I mean, there were a few things I didn't know. Uh. Still need about how to count a quorum. If you have a board that's not full, you still need to count all the seats when you're figuring out a quorum. Uh, email, you can distribute information but not discuss. Emailing less than a quorum. Google Docs, ooh. Anyways, a couple of interesting things I learned. Advisory boards that don't have regular meeting schedules are still advised to schedule and post their meetings like that, like the little board you guys have, a working project, but.
The culvert.
Yeah, right.
So those guys should be warning their meetings and.
That, that's what these people said.
Okay.
Yeah, if you follow everything they say, you never get anything done.
Right.
So, we, sometimes we just have to fly ahead. State of science.
So did you wanna go through this whole thing?
No, 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 I just want you to do it on your, at your leisure.
Well, maybe it would happen, right, starting this next hour.
I just wanted to read.
I could do that in the next hour.
Yeah.
Um.
Website, can't remember, discuss the executives. Anyways. Nothing much new.
Hmm.
I just wanted you all to be very impressed that I spent an hour and a half.
I am impressed.
Thank you.
Good job.
Just don't have me to write a report.
You gave us the reports, right here.
Okay, so, yeah.
And the other updates?
I did the, uh, in, the update on the, um, title search already, so, anything else?
I don't think so. I mean, something else might come up, but we can kind of.
Yeah.
Um, I have, so what I would like to work on for the next hour plus, I had to email a couple of different, um, community members, do you have to have Karen Bemers' email? Does she have an email?
I'll have to look and see if I have it.
Yeah, I, I just wanna touch base with her and let her know that we're, we're, basically, we, that we discussed it at the last meeting, her property and that Alfie's gonna reach out to her. Just to let her know that. And I'll also email Alfie. Um, and I have another, I have to email Tom Russ, the, is it Russ?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can have him.
And Liz, you had something you wanted to work on?
Yeah, I had a letter.
You have a letter to write?
Yeah.
Yep, and at some point, maybe we could start to brainstorm, uh.
Projects?
Projects here.
Yep.
Windows and costs roughly, or just create a scope of work. Then you said you'd make a front porch form.
Yeah, I'll do that for the.
For the, um.
For the empty slots.
Mm-hmm.
Volunteer positions.
And then the other thing that we were hoping to find out for Goddard was, uh, the permitting.
The walker, yeah.
Yeah, so that's something that would be done. And, um.
An address for Gosby's.
Yeah.
For who?
This is for.
Is that the Harris?
That's the place next.
For who?
Gosby.
Gosby, oh, yeah, what's her, the mother's name is Gilmain, I think, yeah.
Was that Harris Cove or is that further down?
Harris Cove one.
Harris Cove?
Yeah.
Okay.
You could actually do a drive-by on that pretty easily and walk around.
Mm-hmm.
Was that complete there, just like somebody abandoned it and left trash, is that?
Yeah, I mean, they didn't abandon the property, they just left a heck of a mess in the yard and.
Gotcha.
You know, and just, could, people could just, anyways, when I looked at it, there wasn't garbage and there wasn't rats, but Robin's been told that there has been somebody there.
Mm, no, nobody has been there, just the rats moving in.
Are those cars just left there? There's like two, I think there's like two, two, three cars on the property?
No, it's, uh, it's too small for that, there aren't any cars. I don't think there's any cars, unless there's something in back.
Are you thinking about Old Quarry Road?
No, 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 I'm talking about the red one, that, that's like directly below where I am. Yeah, we were over there, but we were on the, you know, the, I don't know if you'd call it the back or the front of our property, in the woods, on the other side of Wilbur Road. Um, we saw a couple cars parked there, so.
Hmm. I, I don't know, it's very downhill from Wilbur Road. It is downhill from Wilbur Road. Hmm.
Do we have any, I guess the other question is, do we have any like, uh, maybe jurisdiction is the wrong word, but like, if somebody has kind of garbage on their property, like, um, we can't necessarily tell them to clean it up, right? Unless there is like, it's a health hazard.
Our, our zoning ordinance says that unregistered vehicles and miscellaneous trash are a violation, but, you know, I mean, we spent four thousand dollars down the road here and never, I mean, I think they did clean up at one point, but it doesn't last.
Yeah, okay.
And, you know, it's just not a great incentive for.
At a minimum, though, we could, we probably have a, you were gonna look for her, that person's address?
Mm-hmm.
And at a minimum, we could draft a, a letter, right?
Mm-hmm.
And just expressing that there's been some concern among neighbors regarding, uh, the property and.
If nobody's been there for a long time, what I should, well, never mind.
So. Neighbors are also willing to buy it.
Huh?
Neighbors are also willing to buy it to get it cleaned up.
Yeah, she, but she said, I mean, at least Robin has talked to the mother and she's not interested in selling, but I don't know why not.
You mean Brandy?
Yeah, Brandy mentioned that. I don't know why they, she wouldn't.
Okay, so we, do we have a draft letter of that, like, we sent something to folks similar there? No.
No. It doesn't, it wouldn't take long to draft a letter to say, what would we say, um, what's up with your property?
Basically.
Yeah.
I have a question.
If I had, if I knew where she was, I'd call her, but.
Well, I mean, what are, other than like a letter, like, what are tangible solutions for situations like this? Like, I feel like Goddard was asking for like something very concrete. Do we just not have anything very concrete that like at the town level that we can do?
No, we don't, I mean, it, that's, that's the problem. We, we don't have authority to, we have a zoning ordinance that's kinda weak and towns all over the place have similar problems. I mean, look at down the road there, it's horrible, it keeps getting worse.
We don't really have any enforcement either, you know, so you can, you can issue a citation if somebody can, or even a fine, somebody can choose to pay it or not, but there's no, there's nowhere to go besides that. And then when you start to then go out to like the state or, you know, for help, um, I think things kinda just die, you know? And so as much, you know, we'll go do a visit and, and see what happens, but like.
I mean, if you see, if you see sewage running on the ground.
Yes, that's a problem.
Then the health officer can do something, but in order to have sewage running on the ground, you'd have to have a sewage system of some sort. And if you see it just dumped on the ground, like, when we went up to that place on Old Quarry Road last year, we did, people were saying that there was all kinds of sewage all over the place, but we couldn't see anything like that, so, yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
So anyways, I, I don't remember, I did write something to her.
You did, that's why I wondered if there was still, um, so would you be willing to draft that?
I would.
All right. Great. So I'm gonna pull out my computer and start working.
Okay, I'm gonna work on the letter first.
Great.
You have another letter to write?
You need to watch your work now. You need to watch this work now.
For the road crew.
You get to watch this work now.
The road crew. Just a response to that. Yeah, are these guys done? I've got two.
No.
Oh, I haven't done that, but I will.
I could do it right now. It doesn't matter, you can just, I mean, you guys are here, so.
Did you sign both these, Diana?
I did not sign a big one.
Okay. I'll do it first. Just in case.
Policy for tuna. What I suggested last, to the neighbors last year, I said, why don't you go over and put all that junk in a pile? Put the top of the tent on top of it. I mean, they're not worried about their health, they're worried about their.
Property value, probably.
Yeah, and if they're not selling their property, what do they care?
Right, I mean, I understand, I understand being bothered by it for sure, but it doesn't mean we can do anything about it. I haven't seen it, I have no idea, like, at all. But, right.
It just looks like a yard sale that never got finished. So I could go get my laptop.
You could.
How many do you have before you want to get out?
It's in the car.
Can you fit pastures? Should I get up?
No.
Okay. I know, I plugged mine in just before, but I don't know if it was charged before, and I don't know if it's charged now.
Keep it rolling, I don't want you. I mean, it's fascinating stuff, Jerome.
Well, I can always, you know, like zoom in on the papers so that the audience can read the papers.
I can work until my computer dies, yeah.
Yes, and if you turn your computer that way.
You know what the internet? Wifi is. And what is it? It is. Woodbury Guest.
Do you want a copy of the only permit we have for Todd Walker?
Yeah, I think so. When was that issued, Rob?
2019.
And that was issued?
For a pole banner.
And do you know who issued it?
You mean, who, what's town employee?
Yeah.
Bob Martin.
Okay. Nick Volk is, you know Nick Volk, right?
I know of him, I've met him like once.
He's, uh, he had a question, but he also has offered to teach me to ride.
Teach you what?
Teach me to ride a dirt bike.
Oh, nice.
Yeah.
Are you gonna do it?
I think, if I could.
Are you gonna get one? Are you gonna get a bike?
I did, I, I can do, but I can't, I gotta be careful. I gotta just show up at home with it. I can't, uh.
Yeah, you do.
No, no permission. Scratch it doesn't watch, it's on TV anyway, so I think I'm safe.
I think that's your best bet, just show up with it. It'll kind of be like too late at that point.
All right, well, thank you for indulging me with this, uh, work time.
I think it's gonna be really helpful.
I think so, too.
I was actually thinking like some of the trainings, like depending how this goes, but like some of the trainings that are offered that I never take advantage of.
Absolutely, we could do some of that.
Yeah.
And I think, um, you know, like, when we find, we're gonna get our new email, but at some point, if we wanna have a little tutorial on how to use that, that could be the time to do that.
I feel like I could probably use a tutorial, although maybe it's so obvious.
I hope it's not gonna be anything new. It's gonna be an email for crying out loud.
Yeah, but it's a different email program, you don't understand.
All it is, is, um, it allows us to have working documents in real time.
Right.
And we don't have to use that feature of it, though.
I guess my only issue is like, I know how to send an attachment, so we'll have to learn how to send.
Well, you can still just send an attachment.
Oh, you have that option still?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
So you won't have to do it just like that.
Oh, I must have misunderstood, I thought attachments were gonna not be a thing.
You'll still be able to do it, send an attachment, yeah.
That's good. Maybe I won't have to learn anything new then.
All right, so I just got that, got that off my list.
I'm gonna get this.
So how about Jerome? Is there a way we can not make him sit through this boringness?
Uh, entirely up to Jerome.
He's cool.
We are gonna work like this for another, um, hour, fifty-five minutes, we've got a executive session, and then we're gonna adjourn the meeting, so. Happy to have you, always enjoy your company, but.
I won't be contributing very much if you're, so that's, you mean you're doing the typical thing of signing the bills and like.
No, we're doing other things we keep doing.
This is new, so we're doing a working meeting, so we're actually gonna work.
We're gonna write.
So you could, you could call this an executive session, I suppose, and then.
Well, it's really not a.
I mean, it's still open meeting, so, um, you know, we will have.
I don't know what to tell you in terms of, what is legal or ethical or moral or.
I mean, I guess if you don't mind, that would be great.
For him to stay or?
Yeah.
No, I don't mind.
And then next time, if you don't want to do it, we'll just make a video recording with, with, uh, our computer, and then.
With a Zoom.
With Zoom, yeah, yep. But if you'd prefer.
The next time you do that, you'd be here again in the second week after this.
Eight.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
The fourth Monday.
Yeah, four weeks from today.
Yeah. So, um, well, you know, I guess this needs to be associated with HCTV. Because we haven't, none of us have been using Zoom, you know, except since the pandemic, really. So, I don't think anyone's quite figured it out. What, what is needed exactly where and when? There are good, there are advantages to each system, or both of them be working together?
So the times that we had the Zoom at the other meetings, we also had the camera, right?
Yes.
We haven't had any, where all we had was Zoom to be, I think we're more concerned with, with meeting the minimum standards of the open meeting law.
Exactly.
Rather than having something that people are actually gonna want and use. I mean, you never know.
At, at Orca, what we were doing since the pandemic was to actually edit both the Zoom shoot and the camera shoot together into one piece.
Oh, interesting.
Which was, that could be rather unwieldy because at that point, so many people were making so many mistakes on Zoom that it was like, oh my god. It was, it was very hard to edit.
Question for you guys, is there anything that I can do to help during this working session, or am I free to get out of here? You know, I want to be helpful for you guys, if there's anything that you guys could use me for, if you want me here, if someone pops up, like, I can stay. Appreciate that, Lily. As far as I'm concerned, I have one server for you, though. I don't think.
Yeah, like on a, uh, meeting by meeting basis, like, at another meeting, it might be like, oh yeah, yeah.
Yeah, certainly, just let me know.
All right.
Watch out for the weather. And just leave this on my desk and we'll be good to go. That's your.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lily.
Of course.
So I'm gonna CC the two of you on this email to tell them this.
Okay.
Basically, it's just, we talked about it at the last meeting, um, that work will be done.
Okay. This is the Calvert issue?
No, that's, uh, Demers, this one's Ainsworth Road, and.
Oh, it's not a Calvert issue on Ainsworth?
Uh, I don't know. The quick version is that freak snowstorm we had like a little while ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It didn't get loud, Alfie didn't want to turn around, and people's driveways or yards.
It was muddy.
Yeah, muddy.
Yeah.
I had a.
Okay. So, this one that I'm sending for the, it's a response to the road crew application. Do you guys want me to just go ahead and send it and CC you guys, or do you want a chance to look at, to see it before I send it?
If you've got it done before we leave here.
Let you guys peek at it first. I won't send it, then I'll just let you look at my screen.
It shouldn't be very long.
No, it will not be.
Could road commissioner be capitalized?
Yes.
Thank you.
I mean, it depends on what way you're using.
I had an opportunity to speak with the road commissioner.
Bye, everybody. Bye, have a good night.
Bye. Yeah, I would, I would.
Okay.
John Reed said he hasn't been getting a lot of favorable responses after telling everybody they had to do that ethics training.
It doesn't miss that one.
It is a pain in the ass, it certainly doesn't take ten minutes unless you're.
Yeah.
I guess maybe I'm just too easily distracted. It's so boring.
I'm gonna see if I can.
Maybe I have adult ADD or something. So boring.
Hey, Robin.
Yeah.
Robin, this is mail for Eric.
I'm studying, I'll have to go in. To see if she's got it. I, I wonder if I have.
I can just probably make a quick phone call.
Do a text message with her cell phone.
What's that?
With her cell phone, her cell phone number is, would you text message that way?
Yep, um, camera, I wonder if. You know, I don't think I added it to my contact list, but you have her phone number, right? Do you have her cell phone?
Yep.
This is burning. You smell the wood burning?
Yep.
Even something like signing onto a new server screws me up.
Oh, hey, all that, yeah.
Let me see here. Woodbury hotspot. Or we can sign on to the neighbor.
Hey, Robin.
Yeah.
What's, um, Karen's husband's name?
Mark.
Mark Carter's name?
Mark.
Mark.
It's the, N D R K, Mark.
You need a password? Shoot. Reading.
The hotspot is an unsecured network.
Okay, so.
I got myself onto that, but maybe that's not the right thing.
No, I probably should have just done that because this Woodbury Guest needs a password, I guess, that's not the hotspot.
And it doesn't seem to work that password, I've tried to put it in several times, actually.
Well, we'll see here.
You're putting it in with the spaces?
Yeah.
But when you take a space, it does make a dot, you know, it does.
Password isn't correct, please try again.
Yeah, that's what it was telling me about three or four times.
Yeah, it won't do, it won't take a space. Oh, okay, I forgot the exclamation point.
Is that the emission point?
Yes.
I mean, that's what I understand.
You're on the one for Woodbury Guest, right? Not Woodbury Hotspot?
Yeah, that's.
I'm not sure what I'm, I think that I'm on the hotspot now.
Well, that password won't work for the hotspot, that's for Woodbury Guest.
I didn't need the hotspot because it was open.
You shouldn't need a password, did you?
Yeah, so it didn't need it, that's why I'm on the hotspot.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I couldn't, this is my third time trying this reading and reading in 2024 exclamation point. I think it worked. Oh, good, I found, pretty, I have some viruses, go away. I don't want to draft with co-pilots, stop it.
Can I interrupt you to take a peek real quick before I send this? It's gonna be a quick take a look, so this is for the road crew.
Thank you for submitting an application. Not looking to put up with you at this time, but we'll keep your application on file for, to consider for the future. That's fine.
Okay. Can I interrupt you to take a peek, Chris?
Yeah, I'm just fine.
Send it. That'll do this.
Would you CC us on that, though?
Yes.
Thanks. You know, the other thing that I thought that maybe at some point, this meeting we could talk about, or draft, was we had discussed a long time ago about renegotiating with Swenson's.
Oh, yeah.
And, um, maybe drafting a letter for them.
Yeah.
And seeing if we couldn't, I'm not really sure what the next.
Open up the conversation.
Open up the conversation, so. So, and then...
I don't have my file with me, but I do have a file full of stuff that's useful when we get to that point. I'm so curious whether they're getting tariffed on those big blocks of stone.
Is it good Canada?
Huh?
Is it good Canada?
Yeah, yeah. They're back up north in Canada all the time. They're back up... I mean, stuff comes down through Canada and goes up to Canada and goes down to Barry. Be interesting.
Oh, I bet you I spent it to skip Mark Soney in that accident. Yep.
I hate it for a keyboard. I always use a separate keyboard at home. I don't wanna run a scan. I can't get out of this stupid thing. All right. I don't even buy this protection, but it won't let me go.
Sorry to bother you.
McAfee. Now there's one.
Give my work a hug.
But some of these, there's no... Yeah, escape.
There you go.
We have seven critical viruses, but I'm not paying them.
Okay.
I'm not starting McAfee Total Protection.
Yep, that's anytime.
It's not working either.
Yep.
Permit.
All right. Maybe something.
But the permit is for a pole barn. If somebody's living in a pole barn.
No, I'm pretty sure soon after they built the pole barn, that was supposed to be their start. And they started, they dragged in a RV and were living in there for a while, and then it was a divorce. And that's when things started. I mean, they...
Stair up.
Yeah, I think they started trying to build sort of walls around these little RVs that they have up there to make them into camper type things.
So does the permit say... Does it give... Oh, thanks.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Oh, stop.
I got it.
Oh, this is actually not that bad.
I mean, this house is the garage. The garage is in the house, you know?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, but, you know, as far as the lot being buildable, it doesn't really matter if it's there and it's a separate ownership. It's a pre-existing lot.
Right.
And they have the right to do something on it, whether or not it's...
Yeah.
swampy or...
I don't disagree with that. I think more the issue is, like, they submitted an application for a garage, another living in that. Was no... To which disposal.
Yeah, so there's another problem is getting zoning... Getting our zoning administrator to do anything.
But we don't really have... I mean, like, who says you can't live in your garage? I don't know.
Exactly.
Right, so... I give that back to you, Chris.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, that... I don't know. I mean, I would love to see if we're gonna be able to solve that quickly, but...
I don't see how we really can. I mean, it's just like all the other issues that are still on there.
Taking, jumping into a RV, you know, um, container of some sort and taking it somewhere. I don't know where... I don't think you can take a little thing like that to a septic, you know, like to Montpelier.
And they're probably just dumping over being somewhere.
Yeah.
But you'd have to, like, follow them.
Right.
You know, like spy. We can take shifts.
I mean, you know, look what this... I mean, look at sewage getting pumped over fields all over the place. Unfortunately, it's legal for a lot of people. If you're a large corporation.
That's gross.
Oh, this is much better. RFP.
Oh, you found an RFP?
I got one to copy.
I found an RFP that is six pages long.
How long was the one that you did?
Just made a...
More than...
Twenty pages long. Like, all kinds of, like, crazy...
Remember, it, like, wanted them to be bonded, I think.
Oh, yeah. It was not... And this is in from London Dairy. So this is to replace the roof on the Memorial Park Pavilion. So it's kinda a town. I don't know that I've ever been to London Dairy.
Well, we didn't really do a RFP last time. We just did an advertisement.
No, Chris, we're on an RFP.
Was there an RFP?
Yeah.
Oh. We never used it.
No, we did.
We did, just nobody responded to it.
We put an ad out and we put a website.
We put the ad, but we never...
I think it was linked.
Got a response to do, to send the RFP to anybody.
I thought it was, like, linked in the ad or something.
It was linked to the ad, so if they wanted to find it, they went to the website.
All right.
No takers. So I'm not really sure how to steal a document from a PDF.
You're talking to the wrong crowd.
Yeah. As far as rats, you know, that place, Adam's place, was full of rats when I started cleaning it out. But as soon as all the garbage was gone, the rats didn't have anything to eat. But they don't hang around and eat clothes and stuff like that. They go someplace else and find something.
There were rats there.
Oh, yeah. There were rats. One jumped out of a cabinet and onto my shoulder and...
Oh, my God, damn. That's horrible.
I'm a whole good friend.
I think I've ever seen a rat.
That's impressive.
Oh, my God.
You weren't ready for a pet rat?
No, no, he didn't stay. He just zoomed out before I could...
Oh, my gosh.
He was just startled as you were.
That's a story.
It's crazy.
Well, my friend Gwen Marsh and I put a lot of work into that place.
But country rats are different from city rats.
Oh, that's true. They're like, I mean, like a big mouse kind of, like six inches long, maybe.
In New York, they're as big as cats.
That's what I've heard. That's so gross.
River rats.
In the Hudson River, coming out of Hudson River. Yeah. They get a lot of poison, and they survive, so they get bigger.
They glow.
They like that. I'm sure any of her neighbors down there on Harris Cove would be happy to buy that property, but...
She doesn't wanna sell? Or she doesn't wanna sell for the price of it?
I don't know. I don't know. If Dana, if she know where, know where her son is, it's gonna be hard for her to sell it. I think maybe her name is on it, but it's basically his. I mean, I think his father, Chip, left it to him.
Is he gonna save? All right, you guys, what can I jump into help with here?
Well, there is, um... I don't know if you wanna take on the... I was told Dana would do it a long time ago, and I never did it.
I was gonna want that thing.
No, this is not... That's not for this. It's an ordinance you all wanna do.
You... I'm gonna vote against it. I'm just gonna read it guys right now.
She's gonna vote against it, so we gotta do it.
But you're two and I'm one, so...
I mean, if you wanted to start, uh... Start to think about creating scope of work for the, for this building?
Yep, sure. Um, I will do that.
And then at the same time, maybe we can just roughly estimate costs, what we think it's gonna be, you know?
Okay.
I think that, um, you know, like, there are some window replacements that we've been talking about.
Yeah. They have to be special, like flood resistant windows or something? I...
It's said they're supposed to be, like, hurricane proof or something like that.
That is true, yeah. But I think most of them are today.
Okay.
Yeah, I could be wrong, but...
Nothing. We can ask Bill, Morgan?
Yeah.
Or, uh, Chris, I guess.
Cause I was just so frustrated that I can't, can't go look and see whether they could be... What's wrong with them?
These windows?
I mean, the caulking and weather stripping wouldn't help.
No. I think these have to be replaced.
You think there's something wrong with them? There's something loose about them?
I mean, if they have to be covered in plastic, that's a bad sign.
They're a single pane?
No, they're not single pane.
No?
Look closely.
No, I think I see... Maybe this is a thick pane? No, you're right, I guess. I'm not sure. They don't... I thought you should replace them. One more they put in?
No, it was probably 25 years ago. I don't know, the same year that...
Bruce did the...
All this was done and the... No, the vault was built years before that, so... Was since then. I don't remember what the incentive was for the whole project, but... Yeah, I don't know. Probably 30 years, between 20 and 30 years ago.
Hmm, that didn't work.
That didn't work. Wind strike.
Take a look around.
No. Can't open the vault.
And how are these ones sealed? Are they leaky? They have to pull their end and then they're smiling, or...
Not that I know of this.
Okay.
Were you able to find that address? It says on print for Corin Yumay.
Thank you.
You up in Connecticut now?
No, I'm in Carolina, yeah. Yep. Thank you.
And Robin, this one, you know, there's one issue with? Is it just the ones that are plasticked off?
Yes.
Okay. The obvious ones?
Yes. And then those two out there also.
Okay, so four total.
How about the one in the hall?
Elsie got that one put up for me. That had dropped down.
Yeah, but it's still, if it's...
Yep.
If it's leaky like these, I mean, if it was put in at the same time...
Right. This is the camp on Upper Harris Cove Road.
Okay.
And then I gave you that map of the different properties around it.
So there's actually, there is a camp there? I thought it was just a property. But it's been abandoned?
No, no, she's still paying the taxes.
But I'm sorry.
But nobody's going.
Nobody goes there. Not abandoned.
Yeah, they don't know. So, but it's in Dane's name still, right?
Yes, it only is.
Yeah, okay. So, but now she's living in North Carolina. So, I mean, I would like to offer to... I mean, oh, I can't say this with camera. Never mind, we'll wait.
All right.
I wonder if I have a... Have a... Let's see. Open.
But I can do that one. There's nobody there. I can do that one on my own, right?
Yeah?
Yep, okay.
I'd like to go by there too, because I'm interested what those TV people are doing.
Have they started?
I guess they have, yeah.
Um, how would you feel about, uh, drafting the agenda for the next meeting? You could say no if you don't want to.
No, I don't mind. It's really, pretty simple.
Yeah, well, I think that if, maybe if we, like, I do these ones? And then if you do the...
Or you can just tell me what to put on it, and I can do it like that.
Well, I mean, I would...
Posting it and stuff like that.
It's all pretty much the same.
Right.
So, like, I think, um, I would like to keep doing this one so we can kinda keep a running list of things that we would like to accomplish. But the other one is, if you're willing to, that would be great.
Sure. Michael also says that he is still willing to do the minutes from those meetings.
I asked him, which is great. When Liz gets back, perhaps we will... Coming up on eight o'clock, so we may want to think about an executive session when she comes back. so we may want to think about an executive session when she comes back. I'll put it out, it's pretty just like that.
I always have such a hard time finding my letterhead. I guess I should learn to use this search feature.
Robin just handed me that. How do I do that?
I'm not actually gonna write this letter until I take a look at that place also.
Okay.
But like you said, it's just a drive-by.
Why do I need to do it?
Now, why does it literally save as? It only looks we save. I don't want to save, I want to save as. She's gonna grow more. Save as PDF, and I want to save in a PDF. I just want to save.
Should be able to save as a Word document if you're still working on it.
I know it, but I can't. Well, there we go, up there, save as. All right. Okay. I don't want to lose my letterhead.
All right. So I'm gonna send an email to Paul real quick, see if I can figure out the time.
McAfee, McAfee, stop it. Stop. They always want me to save to OneDrive. I don't want to save to OneDrive.
Diana, when you're talking about fifteen days for posting the notice, is that calendar days or work days?
Oh, you would have to ask a question. I don't know. I think it's calendar days. I would think it's calendar days unless they say otherwise. Now I can't cut and paste this. This is much too difficult. I'll do this when I get home.
Okay. Rehabilitate the next one porch form post?
Huh?
Are you gonna do that?
Yeah.
You did it?
No.
Yeah.
It was too, it was too...
Too much.
Too much different here. If I do it at home, I could do it in ten minutes. But I'll be lucky if I can get this turned off.
All right, let's see if I can...
Getting all these bother things.
Round up Liz, and then maybe we will move on to the next, right in the agenda, which is an executive session, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Liz is upstairs?
I think so. I think I heard her. But was it with another guy? I can't remember the other guy's name. She's more interested in lying.
Yeah, they were actually, we'll come up with a text though. I have found three addresses that they used that are incorrect. And what made me look for is Eric's came back.
Fortune? No, she's right next door.
Yeah, they have both office blocks for him, and I have no idea where they come from.
It's like, well, they live in the lock cabin, right?
Tracked down my car keys.
Uh-oh.
What did I do?
Not very good thing. Well, you got here, so you must have had them when you got here.
Yeah, they were in my hand. Maybe I put them, I should think. Oh, yeah. I found them. I lose my car keys like twice a day.
That's why I put them around my neck.
That's good. I panic twice a day, too. Drive's stretching crazy. All right, now we're locked in. Let's see if I can get...
Well, there's plenty of time to fix that now. Has the hearing not gone?
What do you think? You ready?
Yep.
All right.
I guess I'll take a motion that we enter an executive session.
And see if the camera can hear you?
Yes. I'm going to hit enter, enter executive session. And...
Personnel two. Personnel two. Let's see. Same one we used last month.
Personnel issues?
Yeah, personnel. One VSA, three, one, three, small a, three.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
You're looking for me tomorrow during the day. I'm at Dartmouth with my sister.
Oh, okay.
But I will be here tomorrow night.
Okay.
Thanks, Robin.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're entering executive session.